Good morning, everyone, and I have to apologize, I'm a little under the weather today. It's great to see some public with us today. Welcome. First, I'd like to have, everybody has the agenda, so can I call for approval of the agenda? It's moved by Councilor Matheson-Lafort. Do I have a seconder? Second by the deputy warden, all in favor? Motion carried. Next on, we have approval of the October 20th, 2025 council minutes. Can I get a motion to approve? So moved by Councilor Donovan, second by Councilor Hennick, all in favor? Motion carried. Yes. Before we go any further, I'd like to send regrets for our councillor Kerr, and send deepest condolences at the loss of his wife. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family this week. Next, we have Andy Thompson, Liam Cook, up for the Net Zero Community Building. You know the drill, you have 20 minutes for your presentation and questions, and I'll get councillors to introduce themselves to you.
Good morning, Andy, you know me, District One. Thank you so much for coming. I'm so excited, the fact that you were like, "Yeah, I'll come." I'm like, "Oh, my God, really?" Anyway, I watched him on a presentation, just to preface that. I was on a presentation, but probably, I don't know how long ago, I lose track of time, but I thought it was great. And then I ran into him at the NSFM conference, and I was like, "Hey, you look familiar." And now he's here. So thank you for coming today.
Good morning, Perla MacLeod, Deputy Warden, councillor District Two, Big Berecque, Middle River, Noyansah, Jankiline, until the bridge of Wamaco. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Fraser Patterson, I'm the councillor for District Five, which is Bullardry. Andy and I have a bit of a history. We both serve on the Public Safety Committee of the NSFM, so we've met a few times. Welcome, Andy. Welcome to Berecque.
Good morning. My name is Rosella Born, and I'm in District Four. I believe we met also at the conference. And my district is Big Harbour, South Haven, English Town, St. Anne's, and all the way up to the days of Smokey. Welcome.
Morning. I'm councillor Tim Donovan, District Six, which is the Inghgash area, north of Smokey.
Welcome. My name is Wanda Hennick, I'm in District Eight. I serve Dingwall, Cape North, based in Lawrence and Kaptick. Welcome.
Morning, and I'm Jackie Yorgan, I'm District Seven, from Inghgash, from Tim's area to Wanda's. So please go forward with your presentation. Oh, good morning, Liam.
Morning, folks. I'm assuming that there's a presentation up behind us?
There isn't right now. I want you to, if you can control the slides on your end, if you can share your screen, I'll just, while he's doing that, I'll just say it's a lovely drive down here today. Beautiful highways, for the most part. You don't hear, you don't hear that too often. I'm from Pictot County. I'm a municipal councillor in Pictot County, and I think what, we've developed a really cool project here. I've been a municipal councillor for, since 2008. I represent a very rural and a very suburban area of Pictot County, the southeast section. It's about 25% of our municipality, and so I have a lot of small community halls in my district, and that's what I've been, over the last number of years, I've been fixing them up, roofs, ramps. You've probably seen the drill, all the stuff, the washrooms, kitchen areas, and all that good stuff. And more recently, we developed, and I've brought Liam on, and he'll explain this in a little more detail, our Net Zero project, where we combined 21 community-owned buildings, not municipally-owned buildings, community-owned buildings, into one grant application to eliminate their energy costs in those buildings. And it just worked, like we're almost done. And we want to share our experience with other rural municipalities around the province. So I'm going to let Liam take it away. I guess the only other thing I should mention is my day job is as a community developer with Aging Well Nova Scotia. Many would know it as Community Links, but we've changed their name. There's a local resident that's one of my coworkers, Phyllis McClellan. I know it was a MAC. Yes. And so I'm a community developer, and my specialty is community infrastructure lead. I'm a grant writer. So, take it away, Liam, if you can.
Perfect. Yeah, it's great to meet everyone. Thanks, Andy, for the introduction to the Pictot County demonstration project that we were doing on Net Zero.
Do you have your screen up?
Unfortunately, I'm unable to share my screen as an attendee on this call, but I can run through and talk a little bit about the project that we've been doing with Pictot County.
Liam, excuse me, they're trying to get something set up here for you. If you should just hold on one second. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Can you see that, Liam?
I've got a good sense of where we're at, but I can see it in the background. Yep. So it's fine. If you want to just advance one slide there.
All right, just a second. Okay.
Yep.
There we go.
Perfect. Thank you. Yep.
I'll be the Van and White, okay?
Thanks. Yeah, so Andy Thompson gave a great introduction to himself. I'm coming from Dartmouth, going in on this, and our role with Andy on this project was as their retrofit navigator. So we can just jump to the next slide. We've been helping communities similar to Pictot County for the past three years now, advancing retrofits to their community buildings, buildings just like the Mfield Community Hall. So we know in rural Nova Scotia that those halls are the longstanding history of their community. They're the cornerstone where memories, social fabric of the community are formed, and often they're that last community gathering space that's free outside of the home and not necessarily inclined with a business. Next slide. And so the thing that we've been seeing with these, the reality with these halls, is that they're seeing fewer volunteers year over year. If we were to talk about energy poverty, where over 30% of the money coming into a home or a business goes towards paying the energy bill, the majority of these rural community halls are certainly living in energy poverty, and we're continuing to see that go up and up with the increase in electricity rates, oil costs, and propane bills. Oftentimes, they're facing neglect, either because of lower community involvement, or just a lack of skills to maintain those properties and a formal structure to maintain them. And finally, it wasn't uncommon for community groups to rally around those community centers, to rally around their smaller churches when they were being sold off 10, 15 years ago. More and more, over the last few years, we're starting to see those buildings sold off without a voice from the public side of things, because the community simply can't maintain them. And there are a lot of risks and challenges of going it alone. We know that there's a lack of dedicated staff capacity, whether that's paid staff or volunteers. We also know that upgrading and retrofitting to their community buildings can be a stretch if that expertise isn't already in-house. We've talked to a number of community centers that even if they had the funding to do so, the time it would take to fund the project and then get rebates back to help cover some of those costs through programs like Efficiency Nova Scotia, or the province's CFP program, might not work within a budget. And a lot of times, community centers don't have the funds on hand to make upgrades to their properties alone. Privately, or individually, we've been working with community groups that need a minimum $75,000 in funding to access grants to upgrade their community buildings, and we've seen community centers that may only need $15,000 or $20,000 worth of work, so they're not even eligible to apply for a number of community projects. And finally, it can be a challenge to get named contractors out to community centers when they have to drive two, two and a half hours from the next urban hub or center. And so Andy approached me with a vision of how could we help keep the doors open, the lights on, of these community buildings as long as possible. And it was really through capturing the interest of community that they'd no longer have to fundraise to pay an oil bill, that having upgrades that made their facilities affordable to maintain, to take the largest cost of their bills, their heating, their electricity bills, off of the table, so that they no longer have to pay those, would be the way that we would keep those community buildings upgraded, continuing on in their community, and serving local residents. And we knew to do that, we'd need a proven retrofit method that would make sense for them. They'd want local contractors that can service that equipment later on, and we know that we need to increase the resiliency within the local community. And so that's Andy Thompson on the left-hand side there, along with the whole community, and Sean Fraser coming out inside of Sunny Bray Community Centre. We found that you definitely need to have that trusted community champion, someone that could open the doors, make introductions, get community members in support of wanting to upgrade, take some time, reinvest back into their community buildings. They're folks that are, they share conviction on the solutions that can help bring energy costs to zero. They're there to make connections and ideally uncover some of that local funding that might be able to stack with provincial and federal dollars as well. And then, next slide, please. To help out that community champion, the role of a dedicated navigator that has experience being that single point of contact for the halls, so that your champion doesn't become overwhelmed, but knows that retrofit process from beginning to end, that they're there to provide the hand-in-hand support. They translate those messages that are coming from your contractor right through just the community, and they're aware of the funding, the grant programs, rebates that are available at all levels, and can help community groups pick out what the right products, contracts, warranties, everything like that is for the community. And so Andy and I were successful in working on Pictot County to get 21 community halls on board with 42 letters of support, applying for grant funding that would help eliminate $115,000 in recurring energy costs across all of those community buildings. Next slide, please. And what that program looked like was 21 community halls joining together, putting a joint application for funding to these three organizations, the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund, Efficiency Nova Scotia's nonprofit and community solar programming, and the Government of Nova Scotia's Low Carbon Communities Fund. In total, for a $1.3 million retrofit budget, meant that those 21 community centers didn't have to bring a penny of their own money towards the projects. We would leverage the rebates from Efficiency Nova Scotia as that community contribution, and effectively use a revolving drawdown fund to fund those projects. And so we kept deep energy upgrades, affordable, simple, something that everyone could take part in with their community building. With that, we had a nonprofit oversee the spending. That Navigate Energy was doing the work that we said we would do. We'd host community engagement events, give them that dedicated navigator to guide decision direction, take on energy audits, deliver the scope of work agreements, move through all of the work. The community center would not sign off on payment for contractors until they were satisfied with the quality of work, and then Navigate Energy would process all of the rebate payments and coordinate final energy audits to confirm that the savings were what they said they would be, and secure those rebates through Efficiency Nova Scotia, and finally do all of the final reporting to funding partners. Next slide, please. So this is an example of Sunny Bray Community Centre, the start, the finish, and everything in between. And so when you open up those community buildings, we know that there can be risks of what's uncovered. In Sunny Bray, it was a beehive that spanned one and a half stories. In other communities, it might be asbestos, vermiculite, bat droppings. We're starting to see it all. And so just having someone that can plan for those risks ahead of time, and come through the process hand-in-hand with the community's group that otherwise might be deterred from those upgrades. Next slide. This is Val, she's with Tony River Community Hall, and then Rich with West Branch Hall, as well, two beneficiaries of this funding. But basically, all of the halls that we worked with would get a free energy assessment, as well as a walkthrough assessment to identify any of those potential hazards or risks. We'd identify, basically, if there's building envelope failure, so broken windows, doors, we'd increase insulation across the board, update their heating system controls and lighting system controls, make sure they're all getting off of oil heat, and over to either ductless heat pumps with baseboards, or a ducted or central heat pump system. All cold climate heat pumps, high efficiency, that would work down to minus 30-degree weather, and then after that, an electric resistance backup would take part, and then eliminating all of their electricity costs by putting onsite renewable solar panels at those sites. Next slide. For the East River Valley Recreation Association, that meant that children that would be going in for summer daycare programming would have cooling in their building for the first time ever. So when they're going through extreme heat days, the kids aren't getting sent home at 11 or 12 o'clock in the afternoon. Instead, they're able to go into a nice cooled facility, take a breath, get back out and play, all with a $0 operating bill for that space. Next slide, please. For Sunny Bray Community Centre, it meant a building that might have had four or five people coming into it every few weeks, to now being that community centre and community hall that was hosting events again. So this would have been last year's Remembrance Day ceremony at Sunny Bray Community Centre, and it's just finalized in getting a metal roof and solar panels put on to bring those bills to zero. Completely eliminated oil on site, made the building much more comfortable and retaining heat, and you can see it brightened right up, community reinvestment back in the space. With the Garden of Eating Community Centre, they were saving money from day one, when it would have been the highest time of year for them to be paying a power bill. Their power bill was zero. They actually had a credit or a surplus on it because of those solar panels working hard all summer. A building that would host game night, card night, sorry, one to two days a week, is now being used six days a week. Next slide. And there's also overlap, that several of these community centers are paired up with their warming centers. So not only do they have the backup generator, the kitchen, for community residents to come to in a time of need, these buildings with increased insulation are staying warmer longer, or staying cooler longer. They all have cooling applied to them now, and we're seeing great opportunities to maintain those buildings further by partnering with local volunteers, search and rescue groups, potentially emergency management services in the future, so that those buildings are accessible, they have what they need in the time of need, similar to a fire truck that needs to have water and be serviceable when it's needed. Same thing with these community buildings. We're able to give them more attention now than beforehand. Next slide. And so we measure the success in terms of the energy savings, the reduction in oil, the cost savings of $115,000 that's back into the community member's hands to reinvest into community programmings. But we know that community really values the renewed use of community space, that homeowners, business owners that go into those community centers are seeing simple solutions that they can take and apply to their own properties, and the fact that when you fundraise with a bake sale, that money stays within the community instead of going out for oil or electricity costs. Next slide. And so we've been lucky enough, or experienced enough, to join on with an organization and service through the federal government called the Climate Ready Infrastructure Service, which is targeted towards rural communities of 30,000 residents or less, to provide municipal governments with that free support to explore climate solutions. So Andy and I are hoping that today, we'd absolutely love to support Victoria County in making a submission to this Climate Ready Infrastructure Service, providing that expertise support so that we can create a list of qualified community buildings in Victoria County. We can provide those free walkthroughs, completely free of charge, to community groups, identify qualified buildings that would make sense for those net zero retrofits, and basically put together a retrofit roadmap for the community organizations to know exactly what upgrades they should do. This would help us get alignment on where we could go. And then our organization with Andy Thompson is speaking with multiple provincial and federal funders to help reignite that investment in capital funding, to make full investments into community buildings, and we're hoping Victoria County could benefit from that as well. So I'll end it there. Sorry that we're slightly over time, but happy to answer any questions, myself or Andy.
Thank you. Is there any questions or concerns, comments? Councillor Born?
Thank you. Great presentation. So, very informative, and we do have a lot of community centers within Victoria County, and particularly in District Four. I think I have maybe the most. Question, did you have any resistance from any community centers that did not want to partake in the program? And number two, for the ones that did partake in the program, was there any things that they thought did not benefit them? Thank you.
Perfect. Andy, I can take the first bit, and then if you want to add on to it, I wouldn't say that we had any resistance from community centers wanting to be involved once they understood what it was that we were trying to do, and so those community engagement sessions. To really spell out what that process would look like for them was definitely beneficial. There was certainly resistance to specific upgrades to their buildings, and so not everyone wanted solar panels on their site, not everybody necessarily wanted just the heat pump. They might want to hold on to their propane backup system just in case. And in those cases, we work individually with the community centers, that they get to approve the upgrades that are recommended to them. And if there's upgrades that they don't want to do, then obviously we're not going to force them to do so. Yeah, I think I'll leave it there. Andy, anything that you'd want to add on top of
Follow-up to that, well, two questions. What makes a community center?
So, good question. What makes a community center? It's different in every community, right? In my, in my area, we have a lot of fire departments, I'm sure you folks have them, and they double as that community gathering spot, and, and good for them, and they probably have an energized community base to do that with volunteer firefighters, ladies auxiliary that put on meals and all that good stuff. And then you get more smaller communities that have that old one-room schoolhouse that they're, and that's typically what's going to be left in a lot of these small rural communities, because a lot of the churches are closed. And in my district, three churches closed within the last two years without a whimper. They just closed because they can't afford to heat their, that big space. So what you have left is those community-owned pieces of infrastructure. I guess it's, it's a nonprofit, because government doesn't touch a lot of these areas. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
They're not exempt.
They're not exempt. Like, where we, where we fit into the big puzzle is, we're not here to try and fix all of your municipally-owned infrastructure. I mean, Liam has the experience, and, and he can guide you through that if that's a process you want to go through, but we're looking at those, those rural nonprofit groups that just want to survive.
Councillor Matheson-Lafort?
So from, like, inception, or when you approach a community, to receiving funding and starting, what kind of timeline did you guys face with that first? Or does it all follow along, basically just trying to get the grants, the timeline?
So it definitely connects with the grants side of things. For Andy and I, I believe Andy started this project with five community centers in mind in the winter of 2022. We have been connected halfway through into 2023 and secured first grant funding to really put the list of community centers, the 21 community centers together by fall of 2023. And then the renovations for those buildings between full grant funding and successful, like, getting the first investment of capital into those buildings would have taken about 18 months for 20 buildings from there. And just to address the question ahead of that, for the Climate Ready Infrastructure Service, all supports there, that is 100% funded through the federal government, so there's zero, or no cost, $0 from the municipal side of things, to begin that investment.
For clarification, maybe I missed it. Who is applying? The community centers, the community halls, or the, or us?
So for the initial ask from this community, Chris Fund, I guess is what Liam was mentioning, it would be, there would have to be agreement at the municipal level. And Liam is one of a handful of companies in the province that has been shortlisted to apply for this funding. And, but when you get, and that would just deal with that initial assessment to see where you're at with your buildings. To get to the point of applying for larger pots of money through, whether it's Sustainable Community Challenge Fund, or a federal fund, the way we structured it in Pictot County was, we had one of the nonprofits be the lead applicant. It was, there's no municipal money in this project, even though I'm a municipal councillor. And I have to point that out, because people think that there was that backup support. And what happened was, we have one application for 21 buildings, and it scored really well in the SCCF process, and we received that $600,000 from them. We received the maximum amount of money, and we leveraged that, we used the Efficiency Nova Scotia rebates as the community portion of the project. Because typically, when you're building a project, they ask for the community association to put in a certain portion of money. And we characterized the efficiency rebate, both the efficiency side and the solar side, as their contribution, because Efficiency Nova Scotia is private capital. It's Nova Scotia Power-funded programs. So we only, we had one, it's Plymouth Community Centre, my home So we only, we had one, it's Plymouth Community Center, my home community center, we used them, and they set up a separate bank account. We set up a steering committee, and we sort of picked, handpicked the, from every community center, they're all retired typically, and they all have their own expertise. Some are accountants, some are, some are construction people, some people worked in nonprofits. So we gathered up those experts as a steering committee, and we sort of shaped the project with them. And, and if we bounced ideas, should we do it this way or that way? That's where that local input from the nonprofits came from.
And that will be through you guys, or the nonprofits can...
So I guess I'll, I'll answer it, and Liam will correct me, okay?
Yeah.
So I think what we're looking for is if you're interested in doing this, and we can talk to your staff more about this after this, but if you're interested in doing this, we agree, we need the agreement of the Victoria County, because there's an allocation for each area of Canada, I guess. It's, but throughout the province, each county, I think, would have an allotment associated with them, and there's been no, this fund has seen no applications from Cape Breton Island. And Liam can explain how the money, money flows.
Yep. So the agreement is made between the community and Chris, basically demonstrating that this is, sorry, between the municipality and the Climate Ready Infrastructure Service, identifying that those community buildings are of interest to the municipality to consider, to put a plan in place as to how you could upgrade them. Climate Ready Infrastructure Service only considers the planning side of things, so they don't give any money towards capital projects. And every year, so every 12 months, a municipality can apply or reapply to those programs or to that program. The funding from Chris goes directly to one of their service experts. As Andy mentioned, we're on the standing offer list as one of those service experts. And so we would work directly with Victoria County to bring the application to their behalf. Chris would then enter into an agreement with the municipality on what the deliverable is and essentially be your project manager. And then Chris would pay, navigate energy for the services that we provide in helping build out those plans.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Oh, Counselor Matheson LaForte?
Is there ever a fear that we're going to drive up and that we're not going to be there?
Good question. I have a, I have a simple answer. There's always a grant for that. That's the way I approach it. If you have a good idea, if you have a good idea, it's worth funding. And like, like Liam said, this idea started while I was mulching leaves in my backyard in November of 2022. And I had a simple question, how do you, how do you eliminate that big bill? And then I, it's a, it's a question that's easy to answer, well, you do this, this, and this, but all that stuff in the middle. What I can tell you is there's a lot of curiosity and interest in what we're doing in Picto County, because we grouped 21 buildings together, and they don't see applications grouped that way. And that's, if we're going to fix these rural communities, we got to, we got to speed up the deliverables, I guess is the best way to do it. And I believe that both the federal and provincial governments will come on board once we have a good story to tell.
I don't have a question for you. I have a question for councillor here. She did a survey on how many buildings we had. Did you get a tally?
I actually shared that with Andy.
You want to share it with the...
My computer had to restart, so I have to go back in.
Okay. Our acting CEO, Alex, do you have any, any questions or comments?
No, that was great. I had questions, and you guys answered them, or asked them all for me, so.
That was perfect. Thank you.
I know, how many, I think there were over 20 or something on that that I sent you.
Yeah. That's great. Well, thank you. Very informative, and we'll take it under consideration, and you may be hearing from us sooner than later. Enjoy your drive back to Picto.
Absolutely. It was a lovely drive down. It'll be a lovely drive back.
And say hello to my brother-in-law for me, Wayne Murray.
Oh, Wayne's your brother-in-law, okay. I'll just leave you with this, like, one of the buildings that we, we fixed up is in my district, and we just finished doing the work. There's a, there's a woman that lives, lived in our community of Plymouth for the last 60 years. Her maiden name's Stone, I believe, that's a, that's a, and she's developed, her name's Mary Batchilder, but you would know her down here as Mary Stone, and she hosted about 50 people, musicians and people, they did a jam session in this, this building in Churchville yesterday. It was one of those halls that was a seasonal hall, that they're, for the first time ever, they're going to try and keep it open all winter. So for that community involvement, so. It's a very nice story. There's all kinds of those. Okay?
Thanks for the opportunity. Take care.
Thank you. See you, Liam.
Warden?
Point of order.
I believe that our policy allows for a question period before and after council meetings.
Yes.
That that's correct, right?
Yes.
I think we should have it on the agenda at future meetings. It's, if you didn't know the policy, you wouldn't know it was here. It just came to me a few minutes ago, so.
Just put question period.
Do you want to do the before one now, before the recess?
We can ask Ms. McLeod to clarify that for us, please. Ms. McLeod, can you come to the mic, please?
Hi, yeah. So at an April 14th committee, the whole meeting, a recommendation report was submitted to you guys, and it was decided out of that meeting that at the end of every, at council sessions, at the end of every presentation, you would allow five minutes for a question period from the public, and at the end of council, you would allow the public to take for 10 minutes on items pertaining to the agenda.
Counselor Patterson?
I think the reminder is it should be on the agenda, because, you know, I forgot about it until a few minutes ago.
Okay. Yeah, we can get that on the agenda every time. Okay? Good. We're going to take a...
I'm sorry, Curtis is...
Oh, he's here, is he? Okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Mr. Tobin? Sorry about that. You'd like to introduce yourself, and then I, I'll get councillors to introduce theirselves to you.
Sure. Perfect. So my name is Curtis Tobin, and I'm the new economic development coordinator for Victoria County, in a collaboration that you're familiar with, with the Cape Breton Partnership. I was born and raised in Sydney Mines, and I graduated from university with a business degree in management and marketing, diploma in cooperative management, and a chartered manager's designation. I spent most of my career working off island around Nova Scotia from Shelburne County and back to Sydney, and about two years ago, decided to make a move back to the island to be closer to my family. Until recently, I worked in the credit union system. I was a commercial account manager, and I worked remotely for the last number of years for Credit Union off island. But I had decided over the last number of months that I really wanted to find an attachment to employment here on the island, because for me, I wanted to work on projects that were going to benefit the community and businesses locally where I lived. And I've kind of done that throughout my career. I've worked and moved around Nova Scotia, and every time I kind of had a new opportunity presented to me, I kind of moved to that community, because I thought that was an important piece. So while I'm not living directly in Victoria County, I'm really close, and so I think that this is a really good match for that. In my career, just to kind of give you a little bit of background about myself, I've worked with the CBD Cs, I've worked with the COA, I've worked in the credit union system, I've worked for the Nova Scotia Cooperative Council, and I've operated my own company for about eight years doing project management and business consulting with companies here in Nova Scotia and across Canada. And I think that's positioned me for an opportunity like this to kind of work, you know, with the municipal staff here and work in the county with business owners and see how I can help them and help them in their existing business and new opportunities, or grow new opportunities for Victoria County. In my spare time, I spend time with family and friends, I like to travel when I can, I like the outdoors in the summer, not so much in the winter. And I actually am an avid equestrian, so I show and breed and train quarter horses and Appaloosas, and so a lot of people don't know that about me, but, so this year I had a young horse that we bred and I trained, and we showed around the Maritimes and qualified for World Appaloosa Shows in Texas, and had a lot of provincial awards, and she was nominated and won Horse of the Year. So that keeps me busy, for sure. As I mentioned, my background is in business development. I've worked on conversion projects in the healthcare system as well, converting software for physicians and departments across Nova Scotia. I've helped new businesses launch new products and services. I've managed teams of professionals to meet objectives for projects that I was leading to move something forward for businesses that I was doing work for. And I've worked in the cooperative sector, supporting businesses and cooperatives around Nova Scotia through programs and initiatives through the Nova Scotia Cooperative Council. And I've worked in commercial finance in the credit union system. In that role, I provide financial services and supports to new businesses, businesses that may be struggling, businesses that may be looking for an exit strategy as well. And I provided, you know, help them with their business expansion, improving and dispersing loans to, and credit facilities to businesses throughout Nova Scotia, to help them manage their needs, and I had a large portfolio of clients that I managed as well on a daily basis. In my new role, my hope is to work with Leanne, the C O, and the municipal staff and councillors, you know, to figure out how I can support business development activities and attract new investment to Victoria County, and work with business owners, new and existing throughout Victoria County, and how I can support them in their existing business or self-identified opportunities that they see, that way we can help them expand their reach, or maybe expand their season, you know, as well. In the last couple of weeks, just to kind of give you an update, I've tried to come up to speed on things. I've met with municipal staff, I attended a two-day workshop in Halifax that was focused on supporting Atlantic Canadian business initiatives. I've had several inquiries from business owners in Victoria County, so I've reached out to them and had conversations. I've tried to provide them with support and services, or directed them to services that might be able to help them. And I'm just trying to come, become more familiar with the range of businesses in Victoria County as well. So over the next couple of weeks, I'd like to reach out to you personally, maybe set up a meeting or a telephone conversation, talk to you about businesses and opportunities in each of your districts, and how maybe I can help support businesses, or businesses that I should reach out to and have a conversation with them. So I think that will help me in my role as an economic development coordinator, as well as trying to understand the landscape of the, of the county as well. That's about all I had to say. I had a few notes, just to make sure I kind of stayed on track and didn't take too much of your time. But yeah, I really appreciate the opportunity. I will appreciate getting to speak to each of you, and everyone has been really nice so far, so that's helpful, too.
Welcome aboard. We're going to start here, in case you, you didn't get everybody's name before. We'll start here with the councillor.
Welcome. You are quite the Renaissance man of the business world, I'm getting from that resume. Donna Matheson LaForte, my district is District One, Washabuck, Bucklaw, and Wadmecook. Thank you for coming today.
Welcome, Parliament McLeod, councillor from District Two, Middle River, Berwick Inlet, Big Berwick, Nianza, Yankee Line, until the bridge of Wadmecook, outside the Bering Warren. Welcome.
Good morning, Curtis. My name is Fraser Patterson. I'm the councillor for District Five, which is Bullardree, the other side of Kelly's Mountain. I'm very impressed with your background, and especially the horses part, that's amazing, I think. Horse of the Year, I mean, that's, that's like a winner to Stanley Cup, I'm sure. But anyway, and you're from Sydney Mines, too. I have a lot of collections in Sydney Mines, so that puts you in good stead there, too. So anyway, welcome aboard. We're looking forward to working with you. We think, I think everyone around the table sees their district as a, kind of a place for, or a land of opportunities that we could work on. And like I said, I'm looking forward to working with you on those opportunities. Thanks.
Welcome. My name is Missel LaBorne, and I'm in District Four. So I have one of the largest districts in Victoria County that encompasses Big Harbour, English Town, St. Anne's, South Haven, all of, right up to Smoky. So I have a lot of small businesses in my district, on the North Shore in particular. So I'm looking forward to having a conversation with you to see what we could do to help support the small businesses that we have. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm councillor Tim Donovan from District Six, which is from the summit of Smoky to north Inish. As I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of development going on in Inish right now, and look forward to working with you in the future.
Welcome to the team. My name is Wanda Hennick. I'm councillor for District Eight, that's Dingwall, Cape North, Basin, Lawrence, and Capstick. Yeah, so we have some local businesses that are open year-round and seasonal, so it'd be great to, to talk with you and see what we can come up with for the district. Welcome aboard.
I'm Jackie Organ, District Seven, that's from Inish to Wanda's district in Dingwall. And maybe you could help us get through Parks Canada, about the Celtic Lodge. Thanks for joining the team. Five minutes? We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Welcome back, everyone. Sorry that was a little longer, like I'm apologizing again, because I'm a little under the weather, but we are going into district highlights. Counselor Matheson LaForte, would you like to start, please?
Yes, thank you, Warden. I will start. I'd like to start with Remembrance Day in Iona this year. I was honored to attend and participate in the Remembrance Day service. In this time, Paul remembered to tell me I had to speak, so unlike last year. That was in Iona this year, and the ceremony, the ceremony was really thoughtful and moving. And there's a just strong sense of community spirit and appreciation for all those who have served. You can just, it's, the feeling's palpable when you're in that church, something so reverent about it. My sincere thanks to everyone who contributed such a meaningful and respectful service. And then following the ceremony, the Grandona Legion hosted a wonderful lunch, their chili lunch. The hospitality was exceptional, the food was delicious, and it was just heartening to see so many residents come together to share stories and fellowship. Events like these remind us of the strength and warmth of our communities. So thank you to all the organizers, volunteers, and attendees who helped make Remembrance Day both memorable and deeply meaningful. Day both memorable and deeply meaningful. In our area, after months of drought, we are grateful that the recent heavy rains have at least provided some relief by replenishing those residents who have cisterns. So, but unfortunately, the same rains also caused washout and floodings in parts of the district. But thankfully, most of these issues have already received prompt attention and/or are currently in the process of being repaired. So I'd like to say thank you for people getting on top of that. And the last thing I have to bring up is, we had a break-in in our district in one of our community centres. So as many of you are aware, a community centre in District One recently experienced a break-in. But we would like to extend our thanks to Constable John Appleby for his prompt response. And although the loss of valuables and damage to property were unfortunate, we still moved forward and had a successful dance on Saturday evening. A note to the individuals responsible, we have never stored and will never store our cash boxes in the hall. We hope the leftover tubs of ice cream were worth the effort, and that you enjoyed a very memorable cup of tea from our new tea urn. On a more serious note, residents in my district, please remember to check on any seasonal or weekend properties in the area regularly, or contact one of us, and we can do that for you. And ensure that they're secured to the best of your ability. So, one final thing, I'd like to make a motion to be able to take $1,000 from my district budget to give to the Grandona Legion Branch 124.
Motion on the table. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor LaBourne. All in favour? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor, Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden. Just have two things. As councillor Matheson-Lafort said, Remembrance Day was very nice, and I would thank you to the Middle River Hall after, for the soup and sandwich after we have it, and the Bedak Legion for the wonderful dinner, for the veterans' dinner was very nice. Some councillor, councillor LaBourne was attended, and councillor Care as well. And we have a speaker, the former MLA Kid Bane, so it was very nice. Another tone, came to my attention about, was some fires in a couple of months, started one, I think, in Consular LaBourne District, and they was a halt because they used a drone. So we were thinking, they come to me and ask if we can ask Lyle Donovan, our MO, to check it out, if we couldn't, if anything, like purchase some drum, like a drum project, like a pilot, like maybe we couldn't purchase some of them and just be available for the fire department. So maybe the province can give us any money or something.
Sure, we can talk with Lyle and see what he says.
About a drum project for the fire departments. And I'll just, my Public Works report is done, is sent it, so, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I thought you were supposed to ask me something.
Okay, thanks. Councillor Patterson?
Thank you, Warden. There was a Remembrance Day service held in Big Bedore on November 11th, and the speaker, interestingly enough, talked about Jack Monroe. Jack Monroe was known for a lot of things, but he also had a military background in the First World War. He was from Upper Kemted. He was born in Kem, born on Bullardry. He moved away at an early age, was a minor entrepreneur. He was the mayor of a town, and his most famous actions were taking on and supposedly beating the heavyweight champion of the world in boxing at the time, I believe it was Jack Johnson. It was kind of a situation where they would go around and challenge anyone to fight them, and Jack Monroe took up the challenge and apparently knocked him down, anyway. There were some break-ins in Bullardry recently. Actually, they broke into the highway garage, interestingly enough. They took some tools, I believe, and so on and so forth. And they also broke into one of the summer residents, and I believe they stole an outboard motor and a generator. So I guess we've been fortunate recently not to have too many break-ins, but it looks like they are making a comeback. So I'm assuming the people involved report that the RCMP and are aware of them. And finally, as we're speaking here today, there's a luncheon learning taking place in Big Bedore. We weren't successful in getting a New Horizons grant to sponsor them this year, but we did get funding from the county through our senior safety officer, Cassandra Yonder, and we're putting those on, as I say, as we speak today. So the usual complaints about the gravel roads and so on, and that's about it, I think, for now. Thank you, Warden.
Councillor Patterson?
Councillor LaBourne? Thank you, Warden. As part of my district highlights, I have a motion to bring forward. I move that council authorised the installation of a streetlight at 46715 Cabot Trail in accordance with the municipal streetlight policy to enhance the safety of both motorists and pedestrians in the area.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Matheson-Lafort. All in favour? The motion is carried.
Thank you. We have also been experiencing an increase in break-ins in both residential and commercial, as well as near misses in dangerous situations occurring at residents' properties. Several community members have reached out, and at a recent event, I heard directly from attendees who shared the concerns. In response, I will be requesting that the RCMP attend a future community gathering to speak with residents and to offer guidance. That request has been sent out, and this morning I've been in correspondence with the officer to make that happen. I want to report that I did send my report into Public Works, and they are working on several of those items. I attended both the Investors Summit and the NSFM Conference. They were valuable events with excellent networking opportunities and informative sessions that were relevant and educational for our municipality. I was honoured to represent District Four at the municipality at two important events, the Veterans Dinner at the Bedak Legion on November 9th, and the Remembrance Day service at the North River Bridge Church. It was a privilege to attend these ceremonies on behalf of our community. Upcoming events, English Town Hall has an Adopt the Family program in partnership with Every Woman Shelter. The Hall is supporting an local family for the holiday season. Donations are being accepted until December 5th. Please contact the Hall for more information. And Injun Brook Fire Hall has a Christmas fair coming up. The Hall will be hosting its Christmas fair on December 6th, from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. More will be, information will be posted on the events page. Thank you.
Councillor Donovan?
Thank you, Warden. I'll begin also, actually, before I start, I will point out that I did, in a recent conversation with the RCMP, specifically geared toward seasonal residents, they would really like it if folks that aren't going to be here in the winter would let them know where they are, what their addresses are. They're not entirely against doing drive-bys occasionally to make sure things are as they should be, but they have to know in order for them to be able to do that. Just that note from, like I said, from one of the members in the Inish detachment. November 11th, as many of you know, I am the president of Branch 105 of the Royal Canadian Legion in Inish, and we were honoured to attend several, several services that were held at the elementary schools and at the high school as well. I must say, though, at the high school one in particular, as I sat there looking at the grade 11 and 12 students who were 17 and 18 years old, this time in, say, 1940, they wouldn't be receiving report cards, they'd be receiving draft cards, and they'd be handed a rifle and sent to Europe. It's hard not to think of that when you're sitting there looking at them, especially during that ceremony. We've, we've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go yet. Our service at Branch 105 was quite well-attended this year. MLA Diane Timmins attended as well to lay the provincial wreath. It was, it was sombre as it should be. We also, I'd also like to extend my thank you to the many volunteers that made it the success it was, including those who look after the poppy campaign every year. And I did notice this year that a lot more people are wearing poppies than have been in a long time. I won't do the Don Cherry moment, but it's nice to see, especially, especially as president of the legion, it's nice to see that. Onto the, at Freshwater Cove on November 22nd, from 4:00 to 6:00, I believe, they have the community tree lighting at, the Christmas tree lighting at Freshwater Cove. And there's usually various vendors there with hot chocolate and that sort of thing. It's, my wife tells me it's like a Hallmark movie moment, so if you want, I don't watch those movies, she does. Following that, the Parade of Lights on November 29th, that's usually a very popular event as well. It starts at the rink building in Inish, the outdoor rink building, and goes to the Celtic Lodge. Last year, I believe, there were 17 or 18 different floats in it. It's quite nice, very popular. And actually, the county has a float in it, and our float carries Santa Claus all the way up to the Celtic Lodge. That's a pretty good segue into the next one. I know that we have, as council, written a letter to the, to Parks Canada regarding the future of the Celtic Lodge, and I would really like to continue pressing buttons or lighting fires under them or whatever has to be done to find out what and when something is going to be done with that building. It hasn't had power for a year and a half, hasn't had heat for a year and a half. The building is, of course, under those circumstances, deteriorating much quicker than it should, and I really think some decisions have to be made and something has to be done soon. Our wastewater treatment plant that is underway, or not, let me clarify that. Some of the material required to do the construction are on-site. No work has been started yet, no shovels in the ground, and I have been assured that none will until all the proper permits are in place, all the document, all documentation is all in place. Also, though, I have been getting questions regarding risk mitigation and contingency plans, and what the timeline is to have that documentation brought out so that the public gets to see it and gets to understand exactly what's going on there. Other than that, we're all good.
Councillor Hennick?
Thank you, Warden. It's been a busy few weeks in District Eight. First, I attended the summit, and then I went to Halifax with the other councillors, to the SFM Conference, where many topics was of very crucial information to us. We met with deputy ministers, ministers. It was a whole networking organisation that was very well put together and done. I want to make an, there was an impressive presentation by the piece by chocolate owner, I don't know if I'm going to get his name right, Terry Kettum. It was a very moving and inspiration presentation of how he got to come to Anika Nish. And it just made, it opened my eyes and made me think of different ways of how immigrants and that comes to this, to this country. It was very nice. If anybody gets a chance to read his, or see, I guess there's a movie on, out of his journey here, if you get a chance to watch it, I encourage you to watch it. It was, it was very good. I also attended the Remembrance Day service, me and Warden Organ, attended South Harbour, and then I went over to Base at Lawrence and attended the one there. It was very, very well-turned-out for that also. I'd like to spread a special thanks to Murdock Burton. He does a lot of hard work to get these services put on and done, and his hard work and dedication is really appreciated in our community for our war vets. As for upcoming events in the district, the Base at Lawrence Community Centre will be having their annual Santa workshop on December 3rd. Donations are always welcome, so please reach out to the centre. And they also have, on Sundays, they have 45 and Criv on Thursday. They're both at 7 o'clock, if you like playing cards. North Highlands Nordic started their Saturday's Breakfast. It started on November 1st. It's 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. And they'll also have their, their first annual Christmas market and big breakfast on November 22nd from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. So come on out and support that. The Cabot Fire Ladies' Auxiliary will be having a spaghetti supper and game night on Friday, December 12th. And on Sunday, December 14th, they'll have their Christmas Fun Day with games, Santa Foda, crafts, food, and more. So please watch their Facebook page for that. And of course, as Tim had already mentioned, the Parade of Lights is on Saturday, November 29th in Inish. Please message the organisers if you want to put a float in. According to their Facebook page, the floats are a little down this year, so if you want to get one in, please reach out to do that. I said every district north of Smoky loves this event, so come on out and support. It's, it's great to see all the big smile on the kids' faces. I just wanted to shout to Dan and Colleen and Yvette for their great presentation they had Thursday night at the school about grant funding for, for non-for-profits. It was, it was very well done and a lot turned out, which was very nice. It's just an easier way to find out what's funding out there for, for non-for-profits. It was, it was, it was really good. So kudos to them for that. And I'd like to find out from, about dry fire hydrants that we had initiated back when we did our budget, so I just wanted to get some clarification on that of, from Mr. Donovan to see the progress on that.
To Edith's Lyle.
Lyle, sorry, yes. So thank you very much, and that's it for me.
Thank you, councillor. As some of the councillors have mentioned before, we attended the NSFM Conference in Halifax. Also, the Remembrance Day, I was lucky enough to be invited to two. Thank you, Mr. Murdock Burton, for inviting me to the one in South Harbour. It's, it's an honour and a privilege. And to Mr. Dave Donovan, a former councillor, invited me to the one in Neils Harbour, New Haven, the new Senetaph down there. It was well, well-attended, and thank you. And as councillor Patterson mentioned, the senior socials in his district is also in District Seven, and it's very well-attended. Last Wednesday, it went from the Wednesday before, went from 21 to over, almost 40. So it's great. Kudos to Carla for doing such a good job. So any, anyone that wants to attend, I think it's Wednesday again, at between 1:00 and 4:00. A Christmas concert from local musicians will be held at St. Andrews Anliken Church in Neils Harbour on December 7th at 7:00 p.m. And donations, I think, at the door will be going to the Highland Visions Option Home. November 27th, the Highland Manor will be having their annual general meeting. For anybody that's interested, to please come. And November 30th, the tree lighting at St. Andrews Parish Hall will be there. There's hot chocolate and sweets and stories for all the children, and it's a Grinch theme this year, so if you want to dress up in your Grinch jammies or a Grinch t-shirt anyways, but, and that's it for District Seven. Next on the agenda, okay, hold on a second. Can I get a motion to accept the recommendations that were made at our in-camera meeting on November 3rd, 2025? It's moved by the deputy ward. Can I get a seconder? Seconded by councillor Donovan. All in favour? The motion is carried. CAO report from our, shoe, or step in here. Uh, CIO report from our, shoo, or step in here. Go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Warden. So, Leanne has been on vacation for the last couple of weeks. She will be back tomorrow. And so just a, a couple of highlights from the report, following up on some stuff from the last council. We did check with Destination Cape Breton for a clarification if Counselor Bourne would be in a conflict of interest to join the board. The answer was no, so congratulations on joining the board. Counsel has replied to the village's proposal. They have 30 days to reply. That date is December 4th. Uh, we followed up on the fishermen being charged for traps. Fishermen are commercial customers, so accordingly, our bylaw requires us to charge for their disposal. Fees for their disposal typically run around $35. Uh, MP Batiste is coming to council in January. Uh, as Counselor Donovan mentioned, the wastewater treatment plant unit was delivered on-site on Friday. Uh, we will continue to post information as it's available on to Engage if you haven't already signed up. We encourage everyone to do so. And we have submitted our, uh, funding application for the joint regional Remo project, or I guess that's redundant, the Regional EMO project, uh, which is in partnership with Inverness, Porhocksbury and Richmond, so that, that funding application has gone in from all of us. Some highlights from some of our departments. In finance, uh, we are sending out letters right now for our next, uh, our, we have a tax sale coming up, but then our following tax sale will be in March. We'll be sending out notices for that, uh, this last week and this week. And we will also be sending out, uh, reminders related to property tax bill amounts owing. Our next tax sale is coming up. It is November 25th. It is at the Invery. There are only four or five properties remaining, so it will be a small one. Uh, the rest have either settled and paid or have been deferred with a valid reason. And all of our year-end reports have now been submitted and are done to the province and to the UARB related to our financial statements. In communications, the fall edition of our municipal newsletter was mailed out. Uh, included in it was a project update on the wastewater treatment project in Injunish. And like I said, following it, more project updates can be found on Engage. Uh, we will now be doing an encasumistic council meeting recap as a regular feature on our website, where we'll highlight key information that came through the council meetings and re, any resources that come out of these meetings. Uh, communications is also working, are also working on two communication plans. One is related to the new safety measures related to the tipping floor changes. Those will be implemented, uh, November 24th. Uh, we'll have a message out online, we'll have site signage, um, for staff and public who use the tipping floor. And our expanded recycling program starts on December 1st, so we will be, uh, providing an updated sorting guide and a new waste collection calendar, and we'll be sending that out to all residents, and we'll, there will be ongoing educational messages related to those changes for the next year. In our public works department, uh, we have posted a tender for hauling C and D material from Dingwall to Bidek. We expect this work to begin on November 24th. Also, on November 24th, that is the day that, uh, safety equip, proper safety equipment will be required for anyone needing to access the tipping floor, so we encourage all residents to use curbside collection. Our, sure?
So, the, in the tipping for, floor, they, sometimes they drop mattresses, like a big item sometimes. Um, you, how the people will take that to the, do you, we're going to have some bins in front?
Yeah, I believe that's the plan, that it just won't be directly to the tipping floor, there'll be another spot. So it's, it's to get the public off the tipping floor for safety reasons. Yeah.
But they still go in there, but not too far from there, so just, will be maybe some area that they can dump it.
Staff will direct them somewhere.
Okay. Because you say the curbing, you know, they go to the curbside collections, we don't want to start putting that kind of items in the road, so, right? Because it's going to be like a heavy garbage, I guess, so.
Yes. Yeah, and, and they are working on a communications plan, so as, as, uh, the details are put together, it will be shared publicly, so everyone will know.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we are wrapping up our inter-municipal solid waste collection plan project with the consultants. Um, they, the consultants, Dylan Consulting, will be presenting to council early to mid-December. We're just working on finalizing the date because we're doing it in conjunction with Inverness County, so we wanted to be presenting to councils at the same time, so that is to come. We are finalizing our contract with Circular Materials. Um, as I said, under communications, the new recycling materials list is being prepared and will be mailed out, and those changes start December 1st. Uh, the Civic Centre, a rink, uh, facility here in Bidek, is looking to have their tipping fees either waived or reduced relating to material that their contractor is not able to take for salvage. So our manager of public works has gone to view it. Uh, we are recommending that these be waived, but once we have the final amount, it will come back to council for approval, just as we did for the Boardwalk project, so that will come in the future. Uh, we had a water repair that happened on Friday. Uh, this was big because it was the first time, uh, that we used our internal staff to perform traffic control, so that was a, a great, um, initiative that we took up. And as I mentioned, the, uh, the plant was delivered to Injunish for the wastewater on Friday, and a couple of weeks ago, the holding tank was delivered, and it's over 70 feet long, so you can't miss it. Um, in our tourism department, the Cabot Trail 100 Advisory Group presented to the MLAs of Cape Breton, uh, on October 27th to talk about the project details. All the MLAs in attendance were in strong support of this project and have a stronger understanding of the importance of the Cabot Trail and the communities and the residents. Uh, the advisory group for the Cabot Trail 100 project is going to be presenting to the Minister of Community, Culture, Tourism and Heritage, as well as deputy and assistant deputy ministers, and the Executive Director of Tourism Nova Scotia early in December during the Tayan's Conference in Halifax. And Tourism will be attending the Destination Cape Breton Elevate Tourism Conference being held here in Bidek on November 26th. In trails, we are beginning to finalize a few private land easements in order to complete the next phase of trail development. And lastly, in community development, uh, the two community workshops on community funding opportunities that Counselor Hennick brought up. Uh, one was hosted in Bidek, and it had more than 20 participants, and Cape North had about the same. They had breakout sessions with provincial project officers from five different divisions of the, uh, Department of Community, Culture, Tourism and Heritage, so hats off to Yvette and to Colleen for their planning and their delivery of these very successful events, and all participants were very willing to do them again in the future, which is great. And that's it.
Thank you for that report, and I was amazed in my district highlights. On my one-year anniversary of being a warden, I was awarded a bedazzled.
Should we salute?
A bedazzled, as my granddaughter would call it, a meat beater, but, but anyway, thank you, Counselor Matheson-Lafort, for my lovely thoughtful gift.
And just to follow up on, uh, Deputy Warden's comment, um, residents will be able to go to the tipping floor if they need to, they will just need to have the correct PPV on.
Thank you for that update. Counselor Patterson, uh, you think you have a FCM report?
Uh, thank you, Warden. Just to go back to the, uh, CIO's report, uh, I, I think I got this right, you folks were there. I asked Public Works Minister Tilly about the Cabot Trail 100 anniversary, and I believe he said they were going to spend $100 million before that on the road, so, you know, it sounds like they're really taking it seriously. Anyway, uh, thank you, and as I mentioned, or previous speakers mentioned, it was the NSFM that, uh, we attended, uh, last week, the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, which deals with the provincial, uh, governments. The, uh, FCM, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, deals with the federal, uh, governments. And, uh, I am on the Board of Directors of, uh, the FCM, representing Nova Scotia. Uh, there are four of us, uh, and we met in Ottawa, October 28th to 30th. And I'll just give you a, a brief, uh, summary of what took place. One of the, uh, topics that came up a number of times was member engagement, and, uh, we saw the result of that, uh, in Halifax at the NSFM, when, uh, four of us, uh, were on a panel discussion on the role of the FCM. Uh, we also heard from, uh, representatives of each of the, uh, federal parties. Uh, Mark Kearney was not there, though, but he was there in June. And most of the time, we spent visiting, uh, MPs and senators, uh, in their offices. And, uh, just a quick list, uh, we met with Senator, um, Alastair Sorette, who was just appointed, I think in December, and interestingly, we had an interesting conversation with him. The Senate really can't pass any bills or do anything where money is involved, but what they can do is research and influence, uh, other, um, organizations. And the topic of cell phone service came up, and, uh, the Senate, senators can initiate studies on that and try to, uh, figure out ways to improve it. So that was, uh, an interesting, uh, topic. Senator Reginald Coine, who is originally from Shetticamp, uh, we met with him. We also met with, um, MP, um, Braden Clark from Sackville, Bedford-Preston, and we also met with MP Callaway from, uh, the other side of Cape Breton. So, in each of those meetings, uh, we brought up the issues of infrastructure, uh, like I mentioned, cell phones with the senators, and, uh, of course, I, uh, brought up the rink in Bidek, and then all of a sudden, we had the announcement. Coincidence? Well, it could be, but I mean, you never know, uh, what could happen. So, that was really the highlight, as I said, was meeting with the, the senators and the MPs to get issues in front of them. Uh, you know, just because they have those positions doesn't mean they're able to keep up with everything. And, uh, I felt kind of honored because you, uh, I've said this before, you know, you may be sitting, uh, beside someone from Montreal or Vancouver or Toronto, and little old Victoria County has an equal voice that, to, that, you know, with, with them, uh, and it's really quite, uh, humbling, I guess, to be able to, uh, participate in that. I think that's about it. Uh, as I said, the highlights. Oh, of course, I did see an exercise in nation building when I was in Ottawa by a team from Toronto called the Blue Jays, where everybody from across the country was cheering for the Blue Jays. And, uh, it was really quite heartening, uh, being a Leafs fan, if only that could happen for the Leafs. Not very likely, I know. Anyway, uh, thank you, Warden. Any questions or concerns?
Counselor? Just a comment, following up on what you said. I attended one of the FCM conferences in Fredericton this past February titled Sustainable Communities, and connecting with municipalities all across Canada, you get ideas you never would have thought of. The networking is on a whole other level, and it really was a fantastic opportunity. So just to reiterate what he's saying, it does change. You can meet a community, a municipality, the same size as ours, like Brazzo County in, in Alberta, and there are projects they're doing that would work in our community as well, so it's just, it's a great source of information, and the workshops and presentations they have are just, you know, invaluable, so just, thank you. Sir?
Thank you, uh, Counselor, and, uh, this is my fifth year, I believe, being involved with committees and the Board of the FCM, and, uh, not only have I met people, uh, from across the country, but some of them are quite good friends now, because, you know, you met them so often, and you can get into discussions about what they're doing and not doing, and we can all learn from each other.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Um, next on the agenda is correspondence. Any correspondence?
So all correspondence received has been sent out?
Okay, we received, uh, one piece of correspondence late, and as the agenda was already set, this piece of, um, correspondence will be read at the next meeting on December 15th. Uh, can I get a motion to go in camera for a legal discussion? It's moved by Counselor Donovan, second by Deputy Warden, all in favor? Motion carried. We'll go into camera now, please. Uh, yeah, I'll have to. Can I get a, a motion to accept the recommendation that we discussed in camera? It's moved by Counselor Matheson-Lafort, second by Counselor Hennick, all in favor? Motion is carried. Um, you see, we have some, someone from the public. If you'd like to discuss anything that was mentioned in our meeting today, you can come forward, state your name, and, oh, you're just here to observe? Okay, thank you. Um, it's not very often we get public. We don't know what to do with them sometimes. But, um, and that's everything for today. Meeting's adjourned.